Alright folks, it's 9:30. We'll open up the special meeting for the budget presentation from the county administrator. We're all standing for the fledge of lead.
Fledge of lead in the seat of the House of Representatives of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in its own justice world.
Blessings.
Yes, one's basis how they follow with thinking for another beautiful day that you blessed us with. And let's watch her protect us this weekend. Lord just thank you for Mr. Monday and what he's done for the county and helped us out. And Lord is I praying over this budget that he's getting ready to present, that uh, that we won't have to do much to it and that it'll be, that'll work for us and pleasing to everybody else. As sings my precious name.
Amen. Alright, well thank y'all gentlemen, welcome to meeting here. Seeing the pollen off my glasses, that, that helped a little bit.
Yeah.
So.
It's like out there.
Oh yeah.
It would, it would. Mr. Monday?
Yes, sir.
You wanna present the work that the staff has been working on very hard and diligently for the last two months?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board will do so. Uh, let me just talk a little bit first about some of the documents you have before you. Uh, you have a large sheet, it's like a double sheet of paper, it's two pages. It has the proposed tax rates, it also has the department revenues, I mean the county revenues and some of the department expenditures on page two. And then our interim finance director just put together a page three that I emailed to you a couple of minutes ago, and that has proposed water and sewer rates on it. So the two pages that you have before you and uh, the entire document that I just emailed to you, that will constitute a legal notice that satisfies the code of Virginia that will go in the newspaper to advertise the budget. And you also have copies of the slides uh, that we're showing today. And Mr. Chairman, just to remind you, uh, our time constraint today, not trying to rush any things, but we have Senator Cypher's will be in at 10:30 to have a meeting with you. So I will uh, certainly move through the material uh, before then. The PowerPoint presentation that I'm sharing with the board today will be on our website. We'll get that up as quick as we can, as well as the other documents. And those documents will also be available in the county administrator's office for the citizens to review as it is our budget. I'm gonna shift and we're gonna move into the PowerPoint presentation. And Ashley, what part is better for you to show the video first? Let's do that.
Works.
A little gray on me. A little gray.
No, a little bit.
I don't know, I'm about it.
Can it cannot play? Sorry. No good deal. It's helping in work.
That's alright. That's the worst thing that happens to us today, we're alright. Okay. Alright, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to give some credit right now where credit is due. Uh, a proposed budget takes a lot of time and I appreciate the board respecting that and I know you do, but this takes many months uh, to put together. And there's a lot of people to give credit to for putting the budget together. Ms. Pa and Youssef, our interim finance director, she put countless hours into getting the financial transactions called up and then putting the budget together. Also, uh, Ms. Tammy Wright in the finance department for doing research and gathering data and providing information to the staff. Ashley Gunn doing a lot of research clerical work for us. And also Ms. Mary Beth Smith, or HR director, uh, for putting together things about insurance, workers' comp rates and also personnel. And also, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm really pleased to have worked with the board the way that I did putting the budget together. Every one of you offered a lot of insight. And I know there are parts in the budget that not everybody will agree with because there are things that you can have different approaches and still have similar results. And that's to be respected. But I do appreciate the work of everybody coming together to put a budget before you today. In this presentation, I'm gonna go through the recent accomplishments of the board, the revenue trend analysis, the guide and philosophy of putting the budget together, budget steps that's already been taken, budget highlights in the FY26 proposed budget, a summary financially of what those numbers look like and then next steps to get a budget adopted eventually. What Ms. Gunn attempted to show you was a, was a video where our county employees come together and the message is they were gonna deliver and we had technical difficulties. What the employees were gonna say was, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and citizens of Amelia County, we hereby present the proposed FY26 budget. And you think about it, out on the, the football field of Amelia County, you have the employees that come together, although they're not here physically today presenting the budget, all them provide the services that our citizens expect. Without our employees, we would not be able to provide any municipal services whatsoever. And uh, please keep a sense of awareness about your employees. Um, our goal in this budget, of course, is to try to compensate them fairly and let our citizens know that they do anything and everything that they can to do a good job, often wearing many hats that they may not be compensated for additionally. And um, I even thank Mr. Robinson for uh, stopping by when they were working on that picture that you saw of our, of our county employees and showing his support for the employees as well. Some of the things that uh, the board has initiated that I want to give you credit for, the Richardson Road industrial site, the EDA successfully applied for a $100,000 Go Virginia grant that was obtained. And what they're doing is putting together a site master plan. And you can read items A through F in there of the yields of, of what that plan will produce. But in the end, what it will do is uh, prepare a site characterization, which is like a level one through five. And that basically is a score of the site readiness. And then that score can be used so additional grant opportunities can be sought. And I think that's a good move by the county to get another industrial tract. And that sign went up, if I'm not mistaken, Tuesday, just three days ago. And Mr. Smith, the EDA chairman, uh, let me know yesterday that he's already received multiple phone calls since that sign has went up on that Richardson Road site. That master plan is expected to be finished this summer. Also, in public safety, uh, you provided the funding for an emergency communications radio system. The project is almost complete, it is under budget. And I will emphasize here that uh, the county got a $1 million grant to help keep the taxpayer cost as low as possible. And this project is under budget and you will hear how we're repurposing some of those funds to provide resources for FY26. Hired the first county fire EMS personnel, you bought a reserve ambulance and expected a new ambulance this fall that will go in service around the end of the calendar year. And you have thoroughly examined options to provide increased EMS coverage in a manner that's affordable and the way our citizens expect it when they call 911 to get an immediate response. On the fiscal management side, you've taken a lot of steps. You received the first fuller, uh, solar project siting agreement check, which was $125,000 for an extension of the start of that project. You earmarked your waste management funds for the landfill approximately $2.4 million per year, you designated those to, to go into your CIP fund. Your fund balance last year grew by $1.6 million. In other words, you did not run a fiscal deficit last year, you were uh, in the green. And that is notable. You added additional resources to the county's finance department to make sure that your money is safely accounted for and you have redundancy in training. The cost allocation plan, which is one part of the budget, was completed several months earlier than the previous year and your FY24 audit was uh, prepared about three months earlier than last year. So we're fully compliant with the state on those auditing requirements.
Clarify your first point on the siting agreement. You just clarified that's the first for that particular project, not the first siting agreement payment we've received.
That's right, so first for that project.
For that project.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Easter. That is correct. Facilities and personnel, you renovated the circuit court clerk's office and you received a significant amount of funds from the US Department of Agriculture as, in the form of a grant. You upgraded the wastewater treatment plant computer controls. And for personnel, you continue to recruit a finance director or a finance manager. I think there's an interview set up, the new county administrator's first week here, there's an interview set up of a candidate that week. You continued, uh, the county continued its zoning duties with interim services and other personnel in the office stepping up to make sure that those duties were done. You recruited and re-selected a county administrator who starts on April 14th. And a community development director has been selected and he should start the first week of May. I talked to him two days ago and he is looking forward to coming. Ms. Youssef has went over this with you and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. This just kinda uh, shows a little bit about the cyclical flow of your revenue. And what it really, really depicts here is when uh, the tax increase took effect uh, in the current fiscal year that we're in now, you needed those funds. You needed those funds to make sure you had a balanced budget, you did not have to pull from your reserves. And uh, that reduced the likelihood of you having to have a significant tax increase real quick. And we'll talk more about revenues uh, just a little bit later in the budget, but that's just something that Ms. Youssef has already went over with you. The philosophy and putting this budget together, here are the principles that the staff really took to heart. We avoided tax increases to the extent possible. However, I just hinted a minute ago that I do recommend that the board do a revenue analysis and make sure that you don't get in a bind. I know you have the mills tax in queue that you maybe could implement a little bit longer, but um, I just ask that you pay attention to your finance reports, look at your revenues year-to-date, look at your expenditures and uh, resist the temptation of dipping into the reserves to fund the operating budget, try to stay ahead of it. And you should be proud of growing that fund balance by 1.6 million. And that gets you closer to your targeted goal of having a fund balance of 30% of your operating budget. So if your operating budget is 25 million, 30% of that, you should have about $7.5 million in undesignated funds. And you're getting close to that. I think uh, the chairman and I calculated the other day, you should be at around 22%, 23%, somewhere in there. So you are making steady progress. We also made sure that the operating cost for water and sewer is covered with sanitary district user funds, not supplemented by the general fund. And I'm not talking about the depreciation, I'm not talking about the debt service whose last payment will end uh, in the upcoming fiscal year, but I'm just talking about the variable costs for operating. We tried to provide a sufficient transfer to the school system to make sure they had the resources they need to properly educate our children. We carefully examined the department expenditures while maintaining the current level of service, realizing that those operating budgets need to be such that they have the resources to run their departments without having to come back to the board too often for additional appropriations. Hopefully, the proposed budget will be able to do that unless they have extreme circumstances that cannot have been seen in advance. It's not saying that a department will never come back to you for an appropriation, but we tried to make sure they had enough money to handle expected day-to-day operations. Also, uh, you know, we didn't wanna take money from the fund balance to, to balance the budget that you've worked hard to restore. We tried to keep employee compensation in pace with inflation and with a health insurance premium escalations as we can afford it. And finally, we tried to maintain some harmony between maintaining the county infrastructure, funding vital project services that our citizens expect and what the county can afford. Highlights of the budget, there are no tax increases proposed. Increases in water and sewer rates for the sanitary district customers in order to mitigate those variable cost increases that are beyond the control of the county. For a typical Amelia County citizen living in the village that gets the water and sewer from the sanitary district, those users uh, usually average about 3,000 gallons per month. And that would equate to a $5 increase per month or 8% if they have both water and sewer services. So that's about what it would equal to, just so you and the citizens know what that expected impact would look like on average, realizing some people use more water, some people have larger meters, but that's the typical average household. It does restore one deputy sheriff position and I, I wanna stop right here for a second, uh, Mr. Chairman, and talk a little bit about the departments. I've, I've shared with each and every one of you that some of the departments, several of the departments have requested additional personnel. Honestly, I don't think any of the requests were ridiculous. I thought they were all in line and they made sense, but as one of the slides said before, it come down to affordability. And what I did was I went with the position that I thought had the most bang for the buck and was needed the most. And I know that um, you've been here a lot longer than I have, you certainly know the needs of the county much better than I do, but I'm just letting you know that that one position, there's enough money in the personnel line item of the sheriff's budget to be able to fund that one position if you so desire to adopt the budget or you can amend that accordingly however you think those resources should be allocated. And then the budget funds the contractual and outside agencies as discussed by the board during your budget work sessions. And what Ms. Youssef is trying to do is clean up the budget so that we have more transparency and accountability with those outside and accountability with those outside agencies, so they're easier to find in the budget. And you'll have to bear with her as she navigates creating specific line items for those. And, Mr. Chairman, she did carry out the board's wishes, and there is a fund that you'll be able to see when you get the line item budget that says "undesignated outside agencies per BOS." And that's the $5,000 that you directed the staff to put in the budget in case any of those entities come to you off-cycle for funds that you think should be funded. So you will see those in the budget as you directed. And hopefully, we got them all right. We did double-check them. This budget funds EMS Option 3, which transitions the county over a fiscal year of going from a commercial EMS service using county resources over to firing EMS employees of the county providing the service. And it would put more EMS trucks on the road for more coverage of the day. And I know we've talked one-on-one about this a lot in the last few months, and I really appreciate the board taking the interest that you did to learn more about that. And Kimberly Smith and Mr. Emerson both have provided a lot of public information last fiscal year and during this fiscal year so that you prepare to make this important decision. And finally, with the EMS Option 3, there are funds in there to be able to upfit those personnel in what we call the startup cost. The county employees, as I stated before, that's who provides these county services. Without them, we could not provide what our citizens expect the government to do. Keep in mind that we, the neighboring jurisdictions, everybody competes for the best human resources they can get. And what's that competition look like? It looks like how far they have to drive to go to work, which you, as a board, cannot control. But what we, as government administrators and public officials, can control is fair and adequate compensation, a good work environment, and having an attractive benefits package. And I thought really long and hard, the staff and I, we talked a lot about it, and we tried to put together a proposed budget that compensated the employees under the principles that I just stated. But something that really drives the train that we're required to ride is what the state does with the comp board positions. And I want to talk a little bit about that so everybody has the understanding. I'm going to use the sheriff's office for example. In the sheriff's office, you have what we call comp board positions, and we have county positions. And it's good that the Commonwealth of Virginia gives localities revenue for personnel for those constitutional offices, one of them being the sheriff's office. But of course, they don't provide all the funding to have enough resources to get the job done here. We appreciate what they send us, but we have to supplement that. And I want to give you a little story. When I started my career a long, long time ago, started out in the sheriff's department. And one of the times it really bothered me was I was in a county position in the sheriff's office, and there were many more positions in there that were comp board positions. The comp board gave a raise one year, and those employees that were in the comp board slots, they got the raises. And all of us that were in the county slots, guess what we got? A zero, a goose egg, unappreciated, unrespected. And I was doing the same job that those other deputy sheriffs were doing, and they got the raise. And the county, they did what they could afford, and that's what it's all about. So what we tried to do was treat the employees fairly in this budget and making sure that what the comp board gave, the county followed suit. And remember, the comp board gives the majority of those funds. And what we're doing is we're finishing the race that the comp board started by going and giving a nominal a bit to be able to make sure those employees all get the same thing who do the same work. Just some action shots of our county employees. We appreciate all they do. You see one of the library personnel, some of the public works, who save us countless dollars in maintaining the county infrastructure and properties. They line ballfields, they mow and take care of the duties, they answer the phones, they greet customers when they walk in, et cetera, et cetera. Included in the proposed budget is a 3% cost of living adjustment for the county employees. And we didn't just pull a number out of the hat. What we did was, all the county administrators have good communications. We read the news, HR talks to her peers, and we pulled some data together, and we looked at what our neighbors are doing. And remember, we're sort of forced to follow the lead the state takes, and we also were forced to follow what our neighboring jurisdictions do, because we don't want to be seen as the low-cost employer. And think about who applies for positions when that is the image, and we certainly don't want to get in that boat. But you can read for yourself, you can see most of the neighboring localities are going with 3%. There is a 1.5% bonus for comp board positions in the sheriff's office. The sheriff has told you that he would help you as he could with vacancy savings, and we did put enough funds in the budget to provide that bonus that the comp board requires to be paid in July. And they're giving us the funds for the comp board positions. But we came up with the additional match in the proposed budget to do the same for the county employees in that department. Okay, it's not all county employees, but the ones in that department. Health insurance is the elephant in the room. We were lucky, Mr. Chairman, two years, we did not have a health insurance increase. This year, 6%. It's really not bad. You know, look at some of the other localities. You see your colleagues in Nottaway, at the time this slide was put together, they were thinking they were facing a 12% increase. And then you see some of the others with their trying to negotiate and decide how they're going to cover. In your proposed budget, what we did is we met the employees halfway. Again, 3% COLA adjustment for all the employees, comp board positions and county funded positions, and the increase in the health insurance, we split the increase between the employee and the county. So there's money in the budget to cover half of the increase for the employee. It's the best we could do financially. And I can say, I would hope that maybe sometime once the new county administrator gets settled in, you would authorize him and HR to work together and do some type of pay and classification study. And you can, you can do that in-house to the degree that's necessary. And trust your people, and let them go out and do the comps with the market that we're competing against for our human resources. And see where our pay is as compared to their pay to make sure that we're attracting quality employees and that our compensation package is adequate. And you don't have to close that gap all at one time. But if you recognize it, you know where your deficiencies are, you close that gap over time, it'd give you continual quality employees, and you won't have to come up with a lot of it all at once. I've said everything on that slide. In your CIP, as far as your capital projects go, the planning commission vetted your CIP requested projects very well, and they came to you with a proposal, as you know. And the package that they proposed and recommended for funding totals $4.4 million. That's broken down into $1.2 million for school requested items, I think it's mostly paving, $1.8 million for an animal shelter, $1.2 million in miscellaneous public works projects, some that would save you money, like the infiltration and inflow work, and $208,000 for parks and recreation improvements, $4.4 million total. Those are in the budget for funding and implementation unless you take steps to amend that, and you certainly may. Other funding from the CIP that's proposed is IT infrastructure. It's time to repair some obsolete equipment that Mr. Stern has pointed out to us. Of course, we'd have to go through the procurement process. It could be a sole source, however, but we would make sure that we're getting proper pricing on that. It is required. We have no choice to replace that if we want to continue using computer information. PC replacements that are due in FY26 for various departments. And what we did, Mr. Chairman, you'll find IT is in two buckets. It's buckets that Sean controls through the infrastructure and hardware, and then there is another bucket in there for PC replacements. And we realized that that amount, you might want to change it. I think, to be exact, it's $21,000 for the PC replacements. But what we tried to do was do it strategically. Sean developed a schedule and said that those assets should last about five years. So it made sense to replace about one-fifth of those per year. And then at the end of the five years, you start back the process again, and that negates having to come up with those when we have an emergency purchase and we can't use the system and we have to pay more for it, or we can do them before they break. And we chose the latter. And that's in the proposed budget. Machinery and equipment grants for firing EMS. They, in the EMS department, want to write a $60,000 grant. We think it's going to be a 50-50 matching grant. Ms. Youssef put to $30,000 of revenue on the revenue side of the budget, and we have the whole $60,000 for expenditures. You know, what a good way to make important purchases, get the state to pay for what they can. And then there's miscellaneous furnitures and fixtures, such as, you know, some chairs, some office equipment. And these are not frivolous items. These are operating items that we need to keep our employees safe and to have what they need in their offices to do their jobs. This is the way the capital budget looks when Ms. Youssef put the beginning balance of a capital budget together. Her crystal ball on 3/25, is in March 25th, if you follow the spending plan and the budget, here's what it would look like. And remember, this is estimated as of that day. If you take the beginning fund balance that she thinks that we will have on July 1st of this year, $13.1 million, and that's all in. That includes your decal fund, everything that's a part of the CIP fund itself. And then the planning commission recommended expenditures of $4.4 million. The additional CIP items that I just went over with you, the waste management money that will come in in fiscal year '26, that should leave around $10 million as an ending balance in the CIP once fiscal year '26 ends, if everything goes as planned and there are no other changes to the budget. And that'll give you an idea for your planning purposes what that looks like. And you see the amount of equipment and capital items the county is able to procure that continues moving the county forward. We also looked at tax rate comparisons in the surrounding localities. Not that we have to rubber stamp those. We never wanted to copy somebody else's tax rate. A county's tax rates are set to provide the services for your county. And yeah, it's good to look at the peer group, just to, just to kind of see where you stand. But some of the things that we all have to think about is you really need to look at the tax package, our tax package versus the tax package of surrounding localities. Did they just have a real estate reassessment, or are they due for a real estate reassessment? Do they just have a large economic development project that gives a lot of tax revenue and that would, you know, reduce the burden on the citizens? Okay? Did they recently equalize the tax rate if they had a reassessment? And did they use all of the increases to reduce the rate, or did they use some of it to balance the budget? So what the basket of tax rate comps look like, and remember, this was on the day that we prepared the slide for the current tax year, which is the 2024 tax year, and this came off the websites and the staff research that we did. You can look in Amelia, and you can see those highlighted, what our tax rates look like to the peer group, and you can draw your own conclusions from that. But just remember, that's one tool to help you determine how you stand with the neighboring So financial summary of the budget, these are the categories that match our audit. So after the budget year is finished, they will sum those up and put them in by category. This proposed budget, the 100 Fund, which is the county general fund, contains about 45% of the proposed expenditures. The school operating fund at just over 40% of the total expenditures, capital 9%. And you see sanitary district, school cafeteria, school textbook is listed in the EDA, and then the general fund. So a total expenditures, including transfers, of around $60.7 million. And then this is just another breakdown that we do of a budget summary. I'm not going to go through that line by line with you, but you can certainly read that. So I want to stop right here, Mr. Chairman, and kind of, kind of sum up where we are. Okay? Again, there's no tax rate increase proposed. You'll notice the legal notice that's in front of you, this big, long document that many of you said, hey, enlarge this thing as big as you can so we can read it. And believe me, I know what you're talking about. You can see the FY26 tax rates, and you see the FY26 proposed tax rates. Okay? So again, no tax rate increases are proposed in this budget. And I also reminded you that our interim finance director put together the third page of this notice, which is the proposed water and sewer rates. This proposed budget does have an increase to cover our increased variable costs in the sanitary district, so the general fund taxpayers does not have to fund that. So we're passing those on to the utility customers. That is in there. And the capital items that we mentioned is in the proposed budget for expenditure, the 3% COLA, the comp board initiated bonus is in there, the increased contribution for the health insurance that went up on the employees by 6%. The sheriff's deputy position that had been frozen, that is in the budget. All those constitute the expenditures that's proposed before you today. It is a balanced budget and the manner that we described to you for funding. What are the next steps to crank out a budget and to get the process finished? Okay? What we need, Mr. Chairman, we need two pieces of action from you today. What we need is, we need a vote to direct us of the tax rates and the service fees to advertise. Once you advertise those rates, you can go down, but you cannot go up. Okay? So remember, we were proposing the current tax rates, and we're not asking for a tax increase. You may, you may want to do one. I got a feeling you don't, but you certainly could do that. So that's the first piece of action I'll turn over to you, Mr. Chairman, and call for a vote shortly. The second piece of action that I need from you is to set the date for the public hearing. We have to get this monster printout to the newspaper by noon on Monday, and we have to fill in those pieces of information that I just mentioned. The staff does suggest that you conduct your public hearing the last week of April. I think that would be like whatever the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is. Is it the 28th, 29th, 30th, maybe?
30th is Wednesday.
Okay? That, those three days would be what the staff suggests, if you're available, that you would conduct your public hearing. And a public hearing, citizens can come in, they can speak in favor of the budget, they can speak in opposition, they can speak in favor of some of it and opposition. And a public hearing, citizens can come in, they can speak in favor of the budget, they can speak in opposition, they can speak in favor of some of it and opposition to some of it. We certainly welcome that. That's that's why the public hearing is required. And what you would do is, Code of Virginia says that you have to wait at least seven days past that public hearing to act on the budget. And you will approve the budget with two vehicles. You'll have a resolution that memorializes all the tax rates and the fees. We are working on the fees right now and bringing some suggested changes to you. To make sure that our fees keep up with what it cost us to do the things that we that we, you know, get reimbursement for. So that's the first way that you approve the budget. And the second way you'll approve it is you also have to have an additional public hearing. And consider an ordinance that would change the water and sewer rates. So quick summary, Mr. Chairman, I'll be asking you to direct the staff. The tax rates that you want us to advertise for a public notice. And to pick the date for your public hearing so we can get those notices to the paper. If you wish to do a work session or two work sessions or three work sessions, whatever, that's certainly up to you. And then you would adopt the budget at least seven days following your public hearing. And Mr. Chairman, I'll yield the floor back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Definitely put a lot of work into the staff did. We greatly appreciate that. What does the board feel about advertising? I mean, I don't think none of us wants to raise taxes. We did a.
Oh, I disagree.
Okay.
I think it's irresponsible not to. I think we, as Mr. Monday said, puts us at the bare minimum. There are positions that were valid and needed and we're not moving forward with. You know, I've had multiple conversations, this is the leanest budget in county that it's ever worked for. Don't think we're able to fund all the things that citizens need. We're doing the absolute bare minimum. And this will put us in a path that we were on before. Last year, we had to go and make large increases because we had gone through years of not making any increases at all. And if we go back into the cycle of that, then we're going to find ourselves at some point in that in the future, too. It sounds great. No one wants tax increases. I agree, no one wants them. But I think it is the prudent thing to do, to do small increases over time so that you do not have to do what we did last year of large increases. I do not think this is prudent at all.
Okay.
I also don't think that, I don't know. Signal I'm going to vote against it, but that's not going to matter. I do not think we've had enough time with this level of detail. I think this presentation is wonderful, but I don't think we've had enough time with this level of detail. To be able to move forward with that. I have a long list of questions from this that will need to be answered before I can feel comfortable going into a caring about.
Okay. Anybody else?
I like to look at it too. I don't know if we can do it this fast, but far as like Monday, doing a workshop, I'm like, I could probably do Monday. I can't just. It's a lot to take in and have to make a decision.
Okay.
I know we want to speed up, so I mean, I don't.
Well, we're ahead of, I mean, as he said in multiple slides, we're ahead of where we were in the past. So there's not any reason to rush on it.
Okay. Mr. Jones, Mr. Robson, y'all have a.
All we're talking about is setting the tax rate so they can advertise the tax rate, right?
Mm hmm.
We're not talking about approving a budget or sticking with the what we've been presented today.
Mm hmm.
We're just talking about advertising the tax rate.
Mm hmm.
I agree. I I don't, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't agree with the tax rate. And I think that some of the factors in here then drop, the questions drive whether it is in fact. Balanced and we feel good about all the data that then says that we don't need a tax increase.
According to Mr. Easter, that it not all the. Departments was getting the funding because we're cutting them to the bare minimum. If he could let her tell the board. That what. Fundings and we're cutting from them for what projects they are wanting. And how and get that figured. And let's see how much of a tax increases that's going to mean. Your citizens is going to have debate. And. He's, you know, he's wanting a a tax increase to cover that. Let citizens know this is what's being proposed. We're going to cover all these. Projects or etcetera that's being not looked at or cut. And it's going to cost this much money to do that. He's proposing that in order to cover all of our wants and needs, we're going to have to increase taxes this much. Let's let the people come in here and saying, do you want to pay this much taxable taxes? Or do you want to keep your taxes like they are?
Well, I agree. I think that's exactly what would be the purpose of the public hearing is then for people to be able to have discussion.
And if we got to increase taxes like we did again last year. Let the people decide.
Oh, well, to be clear, that's not at all what I proposed.
That's what it sounded like.
Oh, no, I was very clear to avoid situations. I was very, very clear to avoid situations like last year that we do extremely small increases.
Yes, yeah, but.
But last year, last year's situation was different. It's because it was a mistake the prior year when we equalized. That's what got us so bad last year. You've got to look into.
A portion of what got us back last year. That only made up for a very.
No, that made up for a lot. But anyhow, I don't see an issue with the rate. I think there's still other areas we can look at to generate some revenue. Like I've said before, I wanted, I wanted to look at the land use rate. It's not been changed and.
I agree with you on that.
Ever.
I agree with you on that too.
You know, because I always preach, I want to be fair to everybody. And this will affect me. I I benefit from land use. Dexter benefits.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
The Easter family benefits, David probably benefits a little bit. But everybody needs to be treated the same, no matter who you are. And it has not been looked at for the fault that I went back to seventy nine and couldn't find anything different. So I think we need to look at that. I think that would help a little bit. I don't have an issue with the tax rates that we have right now. I think there's other places we could go to generate revenue.
That that would work too. So that would, that would work as well if you pull other tactics. If you pull other revenue sources in and then you're able to address other things to it. But you're getting to you. That would be an alternative to the same kind of thing that I'm that I'm addressing.
I don't have an issue with the rates. I think we're okay on the rates. I think we just need to to get back into the fair situation. And I know. Eric, when he comes in, he has a lot of ideas of some other things that we can do. So he'll be here next week. I think that's going to open the door on some different movements.
Well, I'd like to see, for example, a reduction in the personal property tax rate and some offsetting. You talk about fairness, offsetting when you look at, you know, how out of whack we are in some ways compared to other counties. And some offsetting with overtime with the personal, with those, sorry, the real estate, you know? Can we, again, over a long period of time, can you do small decreases in the personal property? So the total, in that case, total revenue is not necessarily changing, but just some shifting to our balance out as well. Just.
Yeah, I mean, could.
Many options like you talked about, we haven't had any time to consider options, I think, within this.
But I think what everybody's going to see is after every, every other locality starts doing their numbers, I've been in contact with some other counties. We will be coming out smelling like a rose compared to the surrounding areas, except for Chesterfield.
Well, as states now, we will be. But I'm I'm pulling what Miss Easter says, I wish with the lower both of them.
I wish we didn't have to pay any of it.
Yeah.
I'd like to go to a user fee myself. You buy it, you pay it. I'm pretty damn.
I was going to thank him. Me being, this is my second go around, this is a much more pleasant discussion was last year. So kudos to what you did. And it's cool that we can even think about lowering some of the stuff and making nice adjustments. So I think we're a lot better.
Wonderful presentation.
And thank you so much for that. I just want to throw that in there. So I mean, don't get. Feeling hurt that we're like, oh, not yet. I I know you've been through this many times, but you know, we're still way ahead of space than we were last year.
And I I know there's going to be adjustments throughout this budget. I know we go, everybody's go get into it and look at it. I am pretty confident that we're not going to raise tax rates. We've we've been presented a budget and I think with some other revenue streams, maybe some additional. Departments looked at. That's where I'm at. I I think. I I'm comfortable with the tax rates. I do want to drop some of them and we can drop them after we. Put it to put it to the public, we can drop it. We just can't go up. I I feel the earlier we get it to the public, this sheet of paper in the paper and everybody looks at it. Then that's going to give us some dialogue back from our folks. And when we come to our next workshops, we'll have some discussion, but that's my two cents.
Well, who whoever shows up on April twelfth in my town hall, they go see it. Because that's what it's about.
There's no reason to get, it's going to be low.
They go see it. So, I mean, as far as the rates that we're looking at now, and that's all we're discussing, that's all we're really agreeing to do is advertise the rate, which we can go down.
Can.
I will not support an increase, no matter what. Because I think there's other places we need to go to generate some revenue.
Well, I agree with you one hundred percent on that. But the people got to know, we've done a lot of cutting.
Yeah.
Already. And it was said after the budget last year on social media, which seems to be the truth of the matter in the real world out here, but it's not. We cut like crazy last year and still had to do a tax increase because of the situation we were in. Be, I I wish we had Yankee Stadium right here for the Clarkson Rick. With a Olympic sized swimming pool for the folks over there. I I dream we could do that, but in reality, are we going to be able to do that? No, no, we're not. We're not Chesterfield County. We don't have all that money in the savings account, but look what they're doing down there. Look at the growth that's steady coming out of the vein or towards us. That's what you got to put up with when you have that. Yeah, they got a tax base. Look at. We don't have that great a tax base.
Three hundred and fifty thousand people too.
Yes, that's right. That's right. And you're going to pay for that. When our departments are asking for a lot of this stuff, I know they want it. Like the schools, what do you need? What do you need? We're going to give you what you need. Can you do without this? Yeah, I'm sorry, but the people got to pay for it. And if they can't pay for it, things ain't no better than they was three years ago. It's going to take time for the country to come back. They may, they preach that constantly. It's not going to happen overnight. When the good times are rolling again. We got to try to keep these taxes down. We got to have cuts in these departments. I'm sorry. If the school board needs replacing, keep using the one you got. If it's working, if it's working, keep it bare with us. We know you want the need. We just got to come up with a way of getting the funds that don't hurt the people. And we, we are losing tax money out here, but that is not being collected. That should be by. Not having certain people working for the county to help collect this. And I feel it's time now to start looking at an assessor.
Okay.
For the county. Working on something to see if we can't have a assessor. To save us a lot of money on the cost of having our own assessor. It will be shared by other counties and we will be one of them. And it will save us a great deal of money on having our own personal assessor. So we can get these taxes and Mr. Robertson knows all about that. Fair to everybody because some people are being overtaxed and some people are being undertaxed. And that needs to be straightened down.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. We. We're not, we're kind of pushed for time.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. Can we get a summary of all those cuts done this year? Then I I, when I go through this, I struggle to find where we've cut this year. Like, there's very few categories that have gone down. So I think it would be helpful if we can show, if we can show the citizens where all these cuts are that we've done this year.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that that list exists, but it's been cumulative over like three months. What one may could find value in would look at the department request and then look at what was proposed. And then the difference would signify the the delta between the two. But there would probably take us a couple of weeks to go back and recreate how we got there.
Oh, well, that's it. Those aren't cuts.
We could, we could.
Well, that's fine, those aren't cuts.
No, it was asked and you just didn't get all you asked for.
Well, I, that's.
I agree. That's why he said it's, it was, they used it. That's right.
I agree.
You just didn't get everything you wanted.
And I think that's the point, that's the point of actually, I think, that's a word for us clarify. We haven't cut this year.
Yeah.
We haven't cut costs this year.
You just didn't get all the presents you asked for.
Right, it's a very different thing. And we need to not send a message as a board that we've cut costs this year. Because we haven't, and that's fine. I I think we, there's not a lot to cut. Clarence and I talked about this in media immensely. There's not a lot to cut. Yes.
Yes, but they're still on their wish list. They knew better than they asked for because they knew they wasn't going to get it. But they still want that.
All right, gentlemen. Get to the assessors. I think we ought to direct the staff, I guess, to look into that.
Let's take care of, give me one second. Let's take care of one, one thing. Are we ready, is somebody ready to make a motion to advertise that the tax rates do not go up?
Yeah, I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the tax rates stay as they are.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. To advertise.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. Eventually, we will need the cumulative motion to come from the board to advertise whatever tax rates and whatever water and sewer rates. Okay, so I would just ask if the motion could be amended or a part of it also to include the proposed water and sewer rates. You can do them separately or however.
And you have to advertise the whole thing. It's not just.
Correct.
You have to, to be clear, you're advertising the entire budget.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're, you know, keep saying that it's just the rate, but it's not. You're advertising the entire budget.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah.
Land that you're going.
No, no, there's not that.
Do you want to amend your motion?
And I make a motion that we keep the tax rate as is with. The inclusion of a. What is it, five percent?
As proposed, water and sewer as proposed.
Water and sewer increase to the citizens that is on water and sewer.
Okay. Any more discussion? No, sir, we, this is not, not right now.
It might cause a little black eye if you have the same rate that we had last year for aircraft when we said we didn't change it. We haven't gotten that.
We, well, it is.
It is changed, it is changed. It is changed, Paul. It is changed.
Well, he he has a good point. The the motion is not clear. The the motion says keep everything the same, and the motion is not consistent with what's presented to us. Because the mo, the motion needs to be making a motion to advertise it as presented, which does in fact decrease. The airplane.
Hmm.
So the motion needs to be to have, if you want, if what you want is what Clarence thought, the motion needs to be to advertise it as presented.
I'll make a motion, I'll reclaim, reclaim what I said, y'all do what you want.
And that's not, and that's actually not correct in the advertisement. So what's presented to us is not correct because airplane was not one fifty. So even the advertisement is not right.
Where is that, Mr. Easter?
Well, you've got up here, the airplane was one fifty in F Y twenty five. This is, this is my point.
Yes, yes.
You're not ready to advertise.
All right, let's go and advertise.
There's weight, there's, I've caught a couple typos and other things too.
Just don't advertise.
But.
When y'all want to do a workshop.
It's not.
I don't know. I see the proposal, maybe eleven to do.
The proposed is not.
It is, it is.
But the F Y twenty five is not right.
I don't give a.
All right, if the whole thing's going to have to go down the tubes, we can still fix that. That's easy. And I appreciate his point about that.
All right, when y'all, when would y'all like to do a workshop? Can anybody do Monday? Okay.
I can't do Thursday. Nor Wednesday next week. Nor Wednesday next week.
I think that's Tuesday. This is, oh, that's Friday.
You gotta advertise it. So hold on.
So we wouldn't stay at early this weekend.
What all do you have? It's, it's messed up.
You don't have to have the advertisement.
Okay.
It'd be Thursday.
Yeah, one time over there, but I, I'm just starting the list of questions. So.
Okay, I'll attend Thursday morning.
I'll tell you what. I'm going to pause this part of the meeting. We'll discuss this. We have our senator here, Mr. Cypher's. Let's let him do his, have his discussion with him and when that's over, we'll have some time to think and we'll, we'll set up on a meeting date and workshop and go from there. How you doing, Mr. Cypher's?
Good morning. How are you guys? See you. Mr. Sir. So, um, yeah, this is the first meeting with you guys. We've been trying to get around to each of the localities, get to know everybody. Um, as you guys know, I, I came into this last session late. A week late because of water. We didn't have the water in Richmond and then I was sworn in a week after that. So I didn't really go into that with the priorities of the localities. You know, we came straight off of an election. So a big part of the, the agenda for the off season here is to make sure that we understand the challenges that each county is facing. Um, the goals and the priorities of each county and that the legislation that we bring and the priorities that, that I take to Richmond are in line with, uh, with the needs that you guys have in, in the locality. So that's part of this is just a, you know, an introduction, personal introduction. I like to make sure that everybody here, um, at the end of this has, if you don't already, has my cell phone. Cause this is going to take a lot of, you know, we're going to have group meetings, but it's also just going to take a lot of dialogue for us to be really effective. I think our district, it's a very large district. You know, there's 10 counties in it, uh, but they're rural counties and, and, and the current uh, mix in the general assembly and just the way that this stuff works in general, sometimes it feels like the, the tail is wagging the dog a little bit with Northern Virginia and and Eastern Virginia and, and the rural counties, uh, you know, maybe at times underrepresented. So I want to make sure that we do a good job with that. And the only way I know to do that is to make sure that I'm, I've got a relationship with you guys and, and, uh, understand what the challenges and priorities are. So that's, that's kind of, uh, my purpose for coming here. Uh, Blake had sent me over uh, some specific questions that you guys had. And if you'd like, I can, I can roll through the, those to the best of my ability. Um, unless there's some other way you guys wanted to start this.
That'd be a way to start. I'm sure there'll be some more questions afterwards, but that's a place to start.
And I'll do the best I can with the questions. You know, I, I'm, I'm still a rookie here. So I learned a lot in this session. Going to learn a lot more in the off season, but what I'm realizing is that the government is extremely complex. So understanding how all these things tie together is going to take a little bit of time, but I'll do the absolute best I can. So the first, uh, the first question that, that I think you guys had sent was with the, the surplus from this year, uh, what additional funding the, the counties, uh, should expect? And, um, so first off, the surplus, it looks like it was about 3.2 billion. Um, most of that went to a tax rebate. Um, so it's $200 per individual and $400 for families. Um, it's a one-time thing. It's not a continuing liability, uh, but it, but it's a one-time, uh, tax rebate. That's about 1.1 billion. Uh, which gives us a total of about nine billion in, uh, tax reduction, uh, since Governor Youngkin took office. So substantial amount of uh, this has went back to, um, back to citizens. And then the other big chunk was the rainy day and ready reserve fund. So, um, you know, we already had, I think $300 million commitment to the rainy day fund. I think that was increased to about 600 million. Um, and then, uh, the ready reserve fund as well. The total for those two funds was 900 million, um, which those funds now set at about five billion. So, you know, not only we operating obviously legally from a, a balanced budget, but, um, you know, there's some, we've got some powder dry. Uh, with the, you know, regardless of how anybody feels about, uh, the policy changes in, in DC. I don't think there's anybody that's not saying that we're going to at least have a period of difficulty as, as some of these things, uh, start to produce fruit. So it was important for the governor to keep some powder dry and make sure that we've got the resources to deal with, you know, what, whatever may, may come. You know, we're in a, uh, I don't want to make this a political discussion and I'm not going to, um, but the reality is we're in a, you know, we're, we're in a house that's a, a legislature that's not controlled by Republicans. Um, so we're, you know, we're fighting for our priorities. The Democrats are fighting for their priorities. And then we've got a governor that's a Republican who's fighting, you know, for priorities. So where we ended up, I think is a compromise. A lot of the spending that was in the budget, uh, was trimmed out. Uh, and some of the spending that was in the budget stayed in and some of that went in directions that, uh, you know, I think somebody like myself with my viewpoints would be favorable too. And, and some didn't, but of that about a billion that's left that, you know, it was, it was spent. Um, and uh, it looks like about, as far as localities go now, you know, I was actually talking to my, uh, senior advisor this morning about how the funds. So when the state says, you know, some X amount of dollars for this thing that localities need, how does that get allocated between the localities? And you guys may actually understand that better than I do. I understand there's some funding formulas. I don't know what those funding formulas are for each one. But I can try to get as many specifics as you'd like, but basically there's about $2 million, uh, for reimbursement of local law enforcement, um, for transportation of in, uh, individuals under emergency custody or temporary uh, detention orders. I guess that's quite a load on the, on the localities. So there's some reimbursement there. There's about, uh, well, there's 83.1 million dollars for a one and a half percent, uh, bonus for, for state and state-supported local employees. And again, I think the reason that was done in a bonus as opposed to a raise is it doesn't create an ongoing liability. Uh, so state employees are going to get theirs in June and then state supported employees in July is the plan. So about 83 million for that. Um, and $900,000 for a sheriff's office, uh, E911 dispatchers. I think that's in the form of a raise. Again, how that gets allocated exactly, I, I'm not sure yet, but if, if there's specifics you guys need, we can find out. And then, you know, I understand, uh, through the grapevine and plus Amelia is not unique in some of the challenges you guys are dealing with post-COVID and, you know, just kind of adjusting to the COVID funds that came and went and, and, you know, the increased liabilities and, 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 uh, I think the continual flow of, uh, you know, mandates that are coming from Richmond but aren't funded. Um, so I think you guys are in a similar position to a lot of other counties with some of the, you know, trying to figure out how to make the budget work. That's where I would like for us to sit down and really talk about the nuts and bolts about what we can do at a state level and you know, my, from my standpoint, taxpayers are tapped out, like they're just tapped out. Everything has went up through the roof. Um, so taxpayers are tapped out, counties are tapped out, you know, and, and so to me, we've got to figure out, there's a couple of things we have to figure out. One is we've got to figure out how to do more with less. Just in general in this country, if we don't figure that out, we're, we're probably going to be in trouble. And the other thing is we've got to figure out how to put the authority back at the local level as much as possible so that you don't have mandates that cost money to enforce that at many times may not even meet local priorities or create any value at the local level. So those are things that I don't have the answers. Uh, you're going to see in this off season, I'm going to do a lot more listening than talking, but those are the kind of conversations I'd like to have with you guys and see, you know, where is the worst burden coming from? I think if, if, you know, if it's like, hey, we need, we're going to need a, you know, a 10% increase in budget for schools, we, we, that might be a losing proposition, but if we can talk about how to get some of the requirements off of the schools so that they can function, you know, with a, with a, uh, you know, more modest budget. You know, that, that's, uh, kind of where my mind would be headed.
I think that's a great, that's a great point about the requirements. Cause one of the things that we hear often from them is how difficult it is that they have funds that can only be spent on very specific things. And they, they don't have the options to be able to allocate them to different places. And it's like, they're having to spend in places, we'll say that they don't necessarily want to, but like they would prefer if there was the flexibility to move it into other places. They get this money that has so many restrictions tied to them that make it very, very difficult for them. So I think that's, that's a great example for you. But I wanted to go back to your, your point earlier when you were talking about the additional funds coming in on some of the positions that are comp board funded. And you said, you know, didn't understand all that works, which is very reasonable. We haven't understand, understood all that in the past either, but we were just going through some conversation on that and I'll share one of the things that is impacting us to your, to your question. It's great every time the state gives us more money.
But you have to match it.
For the comp board, but we have, exactly.
Yeah, I learned that last week.
Yeah. So approximately half of our positions are comp board funded. There, there's variance among departments, et cetera. And so it's great to say, here's 3%, 6%, 6% in the case of, you know, the 901 operators, things like that. But then the state is only providing that for the ones that are comp board funded. It puts an immediate burden on us. Again, and I'm not saying they shouldn't get it. We actually want them to, but it's an immediate burden on us to find the additional 6%, 3%, et cetera. That we had this conversation. We don't want to not fund because it's completely arbitrary which people are comp board funded and which aren't. It has just to do with the order in which they're hired.
So there's a fairness thing.
Exactly. And it would create kind of an anarchy situation if some got the raise and some, some didn't. So obviously we don't turn down the money from the state. I'm not saying that, but it's, it's just not always as exciting as it sounds, you know, for the state to just be giving out the funds. Because again, it's restricted. It's the same kind of, you talked about with schools. It would be better if there was some way to just say, here's a percentage to give to the counties. You could still say it's for this purpose, but to actually say it has to be allocated only to comp board positions. It, yeah, it creates a burden.
So, Mr. Easter, this is the kind of information that will be very helpful as we go into next session.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you 100% that the state's saying that we're going to give a certain amount of, you know, bonuses, instead of directing that, allocate it to the locality, let the locality direct it. And then maybe instead of giving one per, whatever the, maybe you dilute that a little bit, but it, but it's fully funded so that everybody.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I understand. And these are the little nuances. There's 10,000 of these kind of little nuances with how this stuff works that I really want to work through. I'll tell you, the, the biggest reason that I ran for this office is because I see the, over my lifetime, I've seen number one, the increasing burden on citizens and localities, but number two, the, the, uh, the unintended consequences that come with a lot of the good ideas.
Exactly what it is. Okay.
And, and this is a perfect example of that. So, you know, I, I don't have any political experience to lean back on. I have some business experience to lean back on. And to me, this, this crafting good policy is not unlike, actually I found a lot of parallels, uh, as I'm getting into this, but it's not unlike building a good product. The obvious one you get, you know, it's the 80/20 rule. The obvious one, you don't have to dig real deep to get the obvious one. But if you want the competitive one, if you want the innovative one, if you want the, you know, most cost efficient one, if you want the one that's going to resonate the best with the people that it's intended to serve, you have to dig a little bit deeper. And that's what I'm going to be willing to do, as long as you guys are willing to do it. Cause I can tell you right now, I do not have the, the knowledge or expertise, uh, particularly as it relates to the details and how all of this works, but for us to get together at a table and, and dig a little bit below just budget line items and talk about how should this stuff be working? I think we're at a place in, in, in this country and in this Commonwealth in general where, so I, I'll tell you something that we say in business is money is the enemy of innovation. And what that means is that if you can just pave over the problem with dollar bills, you never fix it. And I think we've gotten to a point where it's, it's a vicious cycle. You know, we do that and then we create unintended consequences and then we pave over that with either policy or dollars. And it's just vicious cycling. I think to, you know, we have to do some, uh, demolition to get past all of that and get back down and start trying to solve some of these problems that they're root. You know, I, I, one thing that has absolutely blown my mind and, and it's probably true for Amelia County, but for most of my counties, uh, public education is about half of their budget. And that's a tremendous amount of money. Don't misunderstand me. It's exceedingly important. But that's a tremendous amount of money. But if you look over history and you look at the, the proportional, uh, expenditure per student and you look at academic results, they're not correlating in a positive direction. They're actually correlating in a negative direction over any long time. Occasionally you'll see small correlations. But it means that there's an underlying issue that just more money is not going to fix. It's not the fault of the teachers. It's not the fault of the administrations. It's probably the fault of having so much regulation that people's hands are tied. But if we can dig down and start finding some of those solutions, that's the kind of legislation that I would like to be championing in Richmond. Not stuff that's going to increase the burden on the taxpayer, but stuff that's going to stretch taxpayer dollars to be, you know, more effective and, and basically get the government out of our hair as much as possible. So anyway.
Restrictions of the main, but.
Yeah, yes.
How, well, yes. You deal. Yes. I used to talk to Bob Good about this all the time because he'd always ask what we could do. But every county is different, but we're all treated the same from the state. So everybody, this is what you get. This is what you do with the money, but what we need might be different than what Chesterfield needs, but we're all treated the same. And that's where the problem lies.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's fine if you want to pass some money down to the county, but let the county decide where they need to spend it. And it's not like they will misuse it because if they do, then you have the taxpayer of that locality that's going to eat somebody alive.
Yeah, that's right.
You know? It's always like the big brother and the father want to dictate to everybody how you, with who you jump through.
Well, and that's, that's why I use the phrase tail wagging the dog. And don't misunderstand me. I understand the, the value of our high density population centers, their economic engines, they create a lot of tax revenue. There's a lot of our population lives there. It's not that. It's more of, let's just make sure that our priorities are represented, proportionally represented. And, and again, together, I think we can do that. I certainly don't have the, you know, the, the knowledge to do that on my own, but, but I'm willing to listen and willing to be creative, willing to stick my neck out a little bit, uh, e- even if it's some things that are out of the, out of the norm. Um, you know, get some innovation in the process, but it's going to take these kind of conversations to do it. And, and just philosophically, I mean, I agree with everything you guys are saying. I mean, the idea that well, first off from a, as a citizen, the idea that, you know, a local government can create better results for a citizen using their money than the citizen can. Now there's certain institutions that require money to be pooled and, and used. Infrastructure, school systems, police, EMS, you know, that's, I get that. But it's like decisions can be best made as close to the problem or the, you know, the, 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 the decision as possible, you know, not on remote control. And it's the same thing for Richmond to dictate what's best for Amelia County or the Amelia County school system or whatever. It just doesn't make any sense. And for Washington to dictate what's best for the state of Virginia, like logically, it just doesn't make any sense. So to me, those kinds of consolidations of authority should only happen in instances where you can't handle it with local authority. But I think we've kind of went a very much the other way. And, and again, that's one, but I will tell you, I was really pleased to hear, uh, from mostly from our caucus, because we disproportionately represent more rural communities. But rural communities were, uh, really well defended in the general assembly this year. You know, the solar siting stuff, the data center stuff. Um, you know, a lot of that, there was a lot of efforts to, in order to satisfy the Virginia's Green New Deal, the Clean Economy Act goals, you know, trying to take authority from, uh, localities and, and, and say that, you know, if, if somebody wants to cite it, the state can approve the citing rather than locality, like that kind of stuff was, was struck down. I will be honest with you, when that bill first, I was in, uh, uh, local governments committee. I served on that committee. And one of the first bills that I saw was that bill. You know, and, and, you know, Simpleton, who didn't at the time really understand how, you know, very much of this works as far as local and state authority. Thought to myself, if somebody wants to put solar on their property and that's what's best for that family, they should have the right to do it. And I voted for it to come out of committee. Wouldn't have mattered, but, um, but then I realized that's not how our government works. We have local governments for a reason. And that's actually, that's actually how the state consolidates control is one incremental thing like that, just chipping away at local authority. And before you know it, you know, the state who's trying to balance the priorities of the entire state. Again, sometimes with the tail wagging the dog, the, the, the real priorities of the localities, uh, the rural localities can easily get overlooked. So I had a little philosophical course correction there and, uh, voted the other way throughout that. Now that's really cemented for me that in general, policy needs to be that as much authority locally as possible. And I hope for you guys that you guys are doing the same thing with your citizens is, is pushing as much authority back to the families as possible. So. So yeah, offseason, we can, uh, we can talk about that, uh, how, how we can, you know, how, how we can help with some of this stuff for next session. I've got 20 bills to carry. I want to make sure they're as effective as possible. We're going to take some big swings. So we're going to have a really busy session next year, but, um, another question was, uh, will Virginia localities continue to have control over whether data centers are allowed? Um, there's nothing that I saw a number of bills to challenge local authority, but I didn't see anything that, uh, that passed that would inhibit local authority. There were some bills that, again, we my caucus was powerless to stop anything, you know, there were a lot of 19 to 21 votes. But, um, but the governor's veto stopped a lot of stuff. So he made some amendments. There was, there was a couple of things that had some teeth in it, uh, that he, um, he. he changed to, uh, to make them permissive instead of required, for example. Um, so I don't think there's anything that will undermine local authority. If there is, uh, I'm not aware of it. Uh, one thing I do want to, you know, just make clear, and again, not, not making a political point, but, uh, we didn't have a veto pin, uh, that was opposed to those kind of things. There's a number of things that would have taken away as well as some other rights, so. Another question was, does additional state funding for K-12, uh, seem likely to ease the burden on localities? So there was $25 million in the budget for schools identified as, uh, off track or needs intensive support. Uh, I don't think Amelia County Schools would fall into that. This would be under the School Performance and Support Framework, I'm, something that I'm just becoming familiar with. Uh, there was eighty, about eighty-five million to raise the cap on, uh, non-instructional support positions to, uh, twenty-five point five per thousand students.
Schools were really supportive of that one. They said that was a big difference.
Okay, good. Yeah, and one of the things that, that I heard a lot about people who just came through my office is the increased burden on schools for, uh, for mental health. You know, whether it's, you know, autism or those kind of things, or whether it's other types of mental health, but, but it's, it seems like we're putting more and more burden on the schools to have certain services available, but that requires resources and.
Because when you talked about like the cost, when you see it go up, which is certainly fact, as you're saying, so much of that cost is not actually spent on instructional piece. It's, it's that and, and support so much for students who need extra help. You know, it's not, the cost spent on the average student is very different than the cost spent on special needs students and others. It's the, it's the nature of our educational system, we educate everyone. And I'm not saying we, we shouldn't, but it's hard to, that average is not the average spent on an average student.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. I, I know you do, and I'm like, but your point on the mental health is, is a great one. You know, those kind of things just then look like cost to educate and it's, it's not exactly the same side of that.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, I saw some statistics recently that said that, I guess in the eighties, uh, autism was about one in 2,000 kids and now it's one in thirty-nine. So I know that's, I mean, that can only equate to more and more load on the, on the schools to make sure those, you know, those kids get what they need. Um, yeah, we're doing some off-season analysis on, uh, just trying to benchmark school systems and, you know, percent of budget and to see if there's any way to share best practices. You know, one thing we've been very successful in our businesses is when you've got an employee who's in an area where they need certain expertise and you've got somebody over here who has been there before, is trying to put them together and say, you, you're, you're trying to solve a problem that I've already solved. So I can cut, you know, a couple of years out of the process by, you know, sharing some best practices. And to the extent that we can, you know, we've got some, uh, in schools is a good example in the district that are like at the very, very upper crust in terms of performance results, you know, ratings. And then we've got some that are at the very bottom, not Amelia County, but there are some in the district. And I, I feel like there's probably some good opportunity to share some best practices. But if we can with data start to understand, well, you know, this system over here, they're spent, like the way they're, something's very different and they've getting great results, well, that might be something that would, would generate some ideas for the other locality. So I, I don't know if we'll find anything there, but that's the kind of stuff we're going to try to do. Again, it's kind of digging a little bit deeper than just line items in the budget. So, yeah, so eight, so, uh, that eighty-five million and then, uh, fifty-three million for enhanced special education. Uh, and then 50 million deposit into the school construction fund. And I think there's one more opportunity for some budget tweaks, but it's unlikely. We did reconvene on Wednesday, I mean, the governor had already done his stuff. Uh, so I, I think all this should be, um, should be numbers you can take to the bank. What I don't know is how these funds get allocated per locality. I guess there's a funding formula and you guys may know what that is, but those are the raw numbers. Um, another question was, our citizens expect fast, affordable internet service. So in addition to River Street, is there anything else, um, to help the citizens in underserved areas of the county, um, besides Starlink? And one, one thing was 50 million in funding for broadband and infrastructure in underserved areas. So that's through the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. Uh, I don't know how the, what is, uh, constitutes an underserved locality. I don't know how that decision is made, but if these areas in Amelia County are, if it fits that qualification, there's $50 million that's been allocated for that. If we can dig into that somehow and answer a specific question for you as it relates to that, um, you can reach out through, you know, to me or through Sophia and, and we'll.
Wanted something about twenty-five up, twenty-five down.
Yeah.
It was the minimum.
Right, went into a higher numbers.
Yeah.
But you're right, that's the two with.
Upload and download.
Um, and again, as we, as we get into legislation for next year, if this is something that needs to be discussed or addressed, we, you know, we can do that. I didn't have any budget amendments this year because I came to the process so late. First off, you have to understand how to make budget amendments to do budget amendments. But secondly, I mean, it was just very late in the process, but next year, that's, th- those are things that we can, we can do. So if there's specific needs that, that are justifiable and that you guys feel like have a chance of, of getting done, let's talk about that. Will me or other state elected officials conduct regular town hall meetings to keep constituents informed? Yes, we will. I can't speak for others. Um, well, we're doing our first, uh, town hall base, no, we don't have it scheduled yet. Yeah, so right now I'm doing, we're, we're, we're posting probably somewhere around weekly office hours in, in, at, at the district office in, in Farmville. So if folks want to come in and sit down and talk for a half an hour individually over some topic, we can do that. But we're in the process of putting together, uh, town halls in every county. So we'll do a town hall in Amelia County. Well, you know, during the campaign, we have a meet and greet, we had some here, you know, you have like fifteen people. It was a good one. So I was going to do a town hall in, uh, my wife's office building in, in Farmville. And I spoke to someone with a bit more experience than me and said, you're probably going to have 200 people there. So I was like, okay, we need to rethink this. So we're going to try to organize them a little bit more, uh, officially. I was hoping for more of a conversational style, but it sounds like, particularly with the, you know, the, the, the somewhat seismic political climate right now, we're probably going to see more participation than we might usually. I am going to keep these town halls to state level discussions. If somebody wants to walk up to the mic and, you know, vent about federal stuff, they can. But it's, for me, this isn't just the, uh, LG, how do you make sure you are standing in contact with constituents so you can get reelected? Like this is literally, we're filling an idea funnel. This is how we're going to bring all of the thoughts and concerns and everything together. And, and basically, I should have kind of led with this. The way that we're approaching the off-season here is just like that. So about approximately half of the off-season is going to be spending, putting a lot of effort into listening. You know, town halls, these kinds of meetings, one-on-one meetings, listening, trying to understand, research into how some of the stuff works that I may see there's a problem there, but don't under, even understand the mechanics behind it yet. So that's like the first, probably the first half. And then of the second half of the off, off-season, it'll be divided into two buckets. One is where we just take all of that data that we've collected and try to, you know, sort and collate that, look for the patterns, you know, and say, okay, if these are the problems that our localities are asking us to help with, how do we most effectively use 20 bills to do that? You know, and, and, and hopefully sometimes kill two birds with one stone type thing. But also I have my personal, you know, uh, ambitions as it relates to government, getting government out of my hair mostly. But that's not what you guys elected me to do. So I don't want to just say, oh, I think these would be great ideas. And I mean, I really need to make sure that we're doing stuff that's practical and that are addressing the, the real problems in front of you guys. So, but anyway, we'll sort and, and kind of collate that and, and, and determine what bills to carry. And then the very last part, before we go into session, will be just in, not in legalese form, but in bullet point form, here's what I plan to carry, you know, and we should sit down like this again and, and talk through it and talk through the bullet points. And here are the pluses and minuses and the unintended consequences and all the things that are going to come up in committee anyway, hopefully. Um, but, but have, have these things in as good a shape as possible before we send them for drafting is the, is the goal. So anyway, so yes, absolutely, we'll be doing town halls. It's, it's, there's some, it's a little more complicated to organize than I thought because I think they may get more participation than I originally thought. Now, we may prepare for 200 and get to 15, but I guess it's better to over-prepare than, than under-prepare. So that's what I have. I didn't mean to take so much else time, but.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Glad to.
All the time you want.
A- any specific questions outside of those that you guys have?
The only one I have, um, our county and many other counties are facing a shortage of, of EMS providers. Voluntarism is, is decreasing. So that's a huge hit to budgets across, across this region. It's happening to supplement EMS care and transports. So if, if the state could, I know, um, gentleman in Charlotte has been pushing a lot of this for years, but any help we can get, that would certainly help.
So, so the, 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 the underlying issue is that there's less volunteers and then that's created, essentially created a need for more paid positions. Okay. Cause and the reason I'm asking that is I know in some of the counties where there's, uh, disproportionately high growth, they're having the problem of they, these, all of these people coming in, even though it increases the tax base, and it puts an immediate load on EMS and school and fire and all of that.
No, we have that.
So it's a little bit of both.
Yeah, but to this point, um, David and I have talked about this in the past, like, part of that volunteer thing is not always that there's less people wanting to volunteer. It goes back to your point on regulations too. So the state has put so many regulations on EMS volunteer particularly, that, and I'll, I'll speak from personal experience, my wife is a registered nurse. She works full-time at a hospital in critical care. She is not qualified by the state to serve as a volunteer for an ambulance.
This is one we should talk about. That sounds like a bill.
Yeah.
Even, and I add to, even the, the, I want to.
He checked into being a volunteer and he told her, you don't qualify. She said, I've been a nurse all my life, working in heart unit at St. Mary's.
Yeah, but you don't know how to do it in the back of a moving vehicle. You're just, you've been saving lives, sitting on a, walking on.
If you in there and somebody dies.
It's all different, you know?
Bringing back.
That's the dumbest thing I ever heard.
I had no idea.
Hey, there.
Yes, a hundred percent.
See everything. Cause I worked in emergency, bring them all.
What the hell?
Existing nurses and things have to go through so much additional training to be EMS qualified, that it's like full-time jobs worth of training. So they, they can't possibly go through that much training. And they can keep up the training and work the job, keep up the training for their job and then keep up training for the EMS.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like in some ways, government has become Lexus with a relentless pursuit of perfection.
Yeah.
But with that, but with a complete monopoly on the market, there's no competitive, there's no competition for the services. And so what we do is we try to, every time we find a little problem, we have to perfect it. We have to perfect it, we have to, well, every time we try to perfect something, we create an unintended problem. And, and, you know, to me, th- there's a, a philosophical shift that's needed in the country in general as far as what we expect out of government. You know, there's consequences to over-perfecting things, to over-regulating things. And there's, and there's consequence, you can call it consequences, to acknowledging people's God-given liberty. You tell me which one is the one we'd rather live with, you know? I'm, I'm much more in favor of the latter than the former. And, uh, and, and I think that's one of the reasons that taxpayers are tapped out and localities are tapped out and everybody's tapped out because we keep, i- i- in, again, in, in business, there's this concept of proportional return. If you invest $10,000 into something, it had better create a return that makes that a financially wise decision. In government, it's incremental return. We're going to spend $10 million, we're going to move the needle this much and then we're going to pat ourselves on the back because we made it better. But it's not $10 million better. So that's, th- those are the kind of conversations.
What's your hurdle rate actually? Yeah. I think David brought it up on the exact right point. I think he talks about volunteers in the, the rural areas. I think you had a good point, you mentioned that you're representing the rural areas. I think this and the volunteering, it disproportionately impacts the rural areas who do have to rely, because of our funding, have to rely on the volunteers more. There's a belief, I can't say there's necessarily facts to back it up, that there, that some of the organizations in the populated areas have kind of perpetuated this problem intentionally because there are organization, professional organizations related to EMS that this is beneficial for. The, if you can.
Did you just say follow the money?
Well, yeah, essentially, but if you can work the volunteers out, then, you know, and in the, in the cities and things, that works, right? Because there's, there is enough funding then to get the, the paid, paid EMS in. But there's not obviously in the rural areas. And so, I mean, maybe it's one of those situations where you need to say, it can differ in, in rural areas. Let's say the rules can just be, can just be different. You know, it doesn't have to be the same everywhere. You have, it, it's not about having a lower standard of care necessarily, but your qualifications can be equivalent from somewhere else.
Yeah.
And, and. Training hours too.
Yeah, that's a great.
To be a, a EMT is, it used to be a hundred and, say a hundred and fifty hours, I don't know exactly. Now it's a year and, uh, to become a paramedic is two or three-year time, which shouldn't really drag out that long.
Yeah.
But it's the same. So that, this is a good one for us to talk about.
Sophia, do you have that on?
Yeah, so we, we're creating a bucket of legislative ideas. This is one we could really look at, that we might be able to move the needle. And look, I want to be clear, like my cynicism is a little bit tongue in cheek. I mean, wh- wh- the other thing that I've realized going through the, the process now, we've got a lot of people in Richmond that are really trying to do the right thing. You know, I had this view going into it of, uh, you know, it's just a, a lack of concern or a lack of awareness. It's not, it's exceedingly difficult to balance so many priorities. And there's so many very verbal, very loud, uh, special interests, a lot of which are completely valid, but trying to, you know, to take a limited amount of resources and solve all of the problems with the expectation that all the problems must be solved. It's a very, very challenging thing to do. And I, and I, again, I think, and markets go through the same thing where it's like you have a paradigm and you build and build and build and build, but you reach a point where it's time for paradigm shift. We have to look at it differently. And I, and I think in some of these cases, that's the path, where the trajectory we're on, we know it's unsustainable. We're printing a large, I, I don't know what it is now, at one point in time, it's 40% of the money we were spending nationwide. Um, now I know it's less than that, but still, we know that's unsustainable. So maybe that's what I hope we can work together for some solutions that'll take care of the needs, but do it in a way that's sustainable and that people can make a living.
I think.
I got two questions.
Yes, sir.
We'll change the subject here.
Okay.
One of them you've probably never heard of.
Maybe both.
It's more and more states, especially in the South and Southwest, is now making it mandatory, this is state laws. And if you got a CDL, I have one, I drove tractor and trailer for 22 years. I know what it is, run up and down the interstate and back road. I've seen some terrible wrecks. God bless me, I know it wasn't one. If you don't speak English and pass an English speaking test, you cannot have a CDL. Seventy-two or three percent of all fatal tractor and trailer crashes in this country is non-English speaking drivers.
Really?
Yes, I just seen that about two weeks.
That, we should connect on this one too.
Arkansas has that law and, and that's the one that stood out. If a company is based in the state of Arkansas and they hire knowingly non-speaking English, English speaking drivers, it's either $50,000 or $500,000 a day, fine. That's how they crack them down because it's almost two-thirds of all tractor and trailer wrecks involve people. And say, well, you gotta go, it's hard to get a CDL. Not so hard, I got one. A dummy like me get one, it ain't that hard. But I've had mine since the seventies.
Before they had rules.
That's something that needs to be really considered because that's a good point there. It's a good point.
And that's, no, absolutely, if, if those statistics, I mean, that, that seems like it's a fairly obvious, yeah.
But it goes back to what you're talking about, money cost. Number two, more states, not necessarily, I think Maryland might be one of them, but in Europe countries, no solar on agriculture land. They're not outlawing solar, but they're outlawing it on agriculture land. These people who come in here and preach to us about how you can revert it back to what it was, bull crap, just what he said. That's a bunch of selling crap, it don't happen.
And I think that's becoming more and more evident, whether it's the toxicity, you know, things leaching into the soil or the removal of the topsoil or, yeah.
Sure of the soil.
Yeah.
By driving over it constantly, eating, let me tell you something, cow pastures, the animals walk on constantly is hard to get into property. Because of what it's been.
Compaction, yeah.
Farm, I know all about that, we sit in here and listen to some of these developers, they shooting us a line of bull. But the average person out here don't know that.
This is why it's important that these kind of decisions can be made at the local level, because you know that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not for taking a landowner's rights, so I own a farm. You ain't coming to tell me what to do at my place, I pay taxes on. The dollar for what the radius.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, we gotta eat. We can live without electricity, solar green energy is the most inefficient form of energy there is. But we get certain governments shoving it down our throats for one reason. Oh, my God.
Well, and and the Clean Economy Act, I mean, the problem is the the. The power generation. Goals don't, you you can't satisfy those with things like nuclear or natural gas, even though natural gas is super clean, because I guess presumably it creates carbon. Uh nuclear, I don't know why that doesn't count towards the goals, but they they've the the Clean Economy Act is so narrow that you can. You can really only meet the requirements by doing things that are expensive and inefficient. You 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 can't do the the more efficient things, and it's really got the power, you know, a lot of people think that power companies are are at fault, and I'm sure they've got their faults, but their hands are completely tied. So, yeah, we we have to do something about that, because at the same time that we're basically have have tied our hands in terms of how we can generate power. You know, we have a lot of data centers coming into Virginia, a lot of those are northern Virginia, but they're they're all over the place. And one data center can use as much power as an entire county.
Yes, these data centers going into these different localities, they should be the ones who have to come up with alternative. I didn't say so, alternative energy source, northern Virginia is the ones that's benefiting. Because his solar farms don't hire nobody, they got one man that can take ten counties there, rides around, makes sure. The boys in Southside Electric told me, I got some friends who work Southside, if there's a glitch in the grid, first place they go and pile it to the solar farm. And most of the time that's where it sucks.
Yeah.
And I heard that the state. Last year was gonna take the uh. The choice away from localities and make it mandatory.
No, they that bill, that bill came through this year.
But we got another governor coming. And that's what I'm worried about being that we are the majority in the House.
Well.
I pray to hope that someone different wins, but it's not looking good.
If if, yeah, look, if uh. And I just say for better or worse, you know, everybody feels differently about it, but. If you don't have either the House of Delegates, the Senate or the uh governor's seat. Then just take a look at what Governor Youngkin has vetoed for the last two years, and that's your new Virginia.
Because they've obviously seen all all these new deals and this here trying to help everybody after the Fed Trump is trying to do. Help, say if you can just throw that for one of Virginia, if certain person wins, being done, we don't know what the future holds, but. There are a lot of points in our favor.
Yeah, but so but in general, data centers and solar, those are two, those are two really hot topics in the General Assembly this year, I can tell you. There there's probably not a legislature or or not a legislator uh in either house that's not going to be looking at this in the off season. You know, there there's an understanding that we have conflicting priorities, the green or the Clean Economy Act, I keep wanting to call the Green New Deal. But the Clean Economy Act, on one hand, and increase in electrical demand from data centers on the other hand, and those two do not live in harmony. And the and the problem is it it's it's gonna trickle down to the rate pair, it's not gonna trickle down the rate pair, it's gonna come like a tidal wave to the rate pair.
Yeah, it's called micro-nuclear.
Well, small. Small modular nuclear and.
Got one coming.
I tell you what, if that is success, so that is a, that's never been done at scale before, nuclear fusion, but if it's successful, it changes everything. It changes everything, it's a basically a safe form of nuclear, nuclear that produces a tremendous amount of power and uh. No, yeah, very little waste, short half life, like way safer than fission.
We've got the law, one of the largest workforce that qualifies to run them right here in the state, North American Navy base.
For fission reactors, yeah, yeah. Any any other questions? An answer for you guys? Yes, sir.
Government out of our business is all I have to say.
We're we're Mr. Robinson, we're on the same page there, you know, trying to find the opportunities to do that, but but yes, sir.
They've just gotten bigger and bigger frickin' control, you know, it's like they're, you're the daddy of everybody now, and it starts in Washington and it just keeps trickling down.
And and you can always trace it back to a good idea. But again, whether you try to perfect society through more and more rules, or whether you leave liberty in the hands of the people where it belongs, there's gonna be negatives. And we have this like, and and that's why I said take the paradigm shift, we have this idea that if there's a problem, the government needs to go fix it, some problems are inherent to humanity. And and it takes a lot of money and time and control and 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 taking away people's individuality to solve every problem that that can be a consequence of liberty. So that's why the constitution's there, and that should be how we're that should be what we reflect these ideas off of, and I think sometimes we we don't, I think we. Again, in my caucus, I feel like we do that pretty well, I've heard the private discussions when the cameras aren't on and we're behind closed doors, and there's a lot of people that really want the right thing, but um. Takes a lot of work to get there, you know, we we got not, you know, the the this, things have nudged in the direction they are, and I think they're gonna have to nudge back, but the first thing we have to do is create some momentum to to nudge them them back and and yeah.
Well, we can solve a lot of our problems down here, y'all can get one bill passed.
Which one?
North of Fredericksburg is in northern Virginia, the state of northern Virginia. Let us be the state of southern Virginia. And that will solve a lot of our problems around here.
Well, if we if we end. If we end up with Canada, we're gonna have an odd number of states, so maybe we'll need fifty two to make it uh the flag work.
They can be their own state.
That was obviously a joke, yes, sir.
Uh couple things, uh couple of us do have a couple town halls, if you want to swing by, I'll give you details.
Would love to do that.
I don't know if we can handle two hundred sound, but if you want to swing by and whatever, I'll talk to you.
Sure.
But the other one is um, and I don't know what kind of influence you have on this, this was back. When you were running with a major problem, it kind of settled down, but uh. The mail system, I learned that the mail system, that the first class mail that metered, so the mail was sitting in the post office. Packages were getting delivered because they're metered. And if there was a, I made a couple calls up to. I guess Richmond State whatever, and the first phone call I got, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of it, it never happened, and the next one, uh the voicemail is full. Um but from my understanding, I don't know where it's at now, but like I said, it was several months ago. If somebody was out sick or whatever, we just ran packages until we got caught up. And I had people that went for almost two weeks, but they got not getting mail. And some people relying on medicine and whatnot, and like I said, I tried to do my best and I went to talk to them and. Oh, yeah, we're we're getting out there, we're 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 doing our thing, that's not true, that's not what was happening, I had people calling me and say, oh, it's Wednesday, I finally got my mail from last week. But I don't know where that's at now, it was pretty hot and heavy, that was about two months ago.
Is is there any state involvement in that, or is that all federal?
It's thrown out there.
Yeah, do you, is there any state tie in there, or is that all federal?
No idea.
Because if it's federal, you know, we, our congressman John McGuire, we could get this in front of him.
Okay.
So if you want to talk some more, if you you want, we could talk sidebar that and talk some more about it, try to understand a little bit better and and it, I think, I mean USPS is federal, unless there's some kind of state component to it. Uh but we may be able to get, you know, Congressman McGuire to look at it.
Like I don't know who it falls on, from my understanding, when I tried to go up, there was apparently tractor trail loads of first class mail at Richmond, and they were told it trickled down, but. That's what you do when you get the packages out, because the old saying I was watching the package, it's not the first class mail.
Sophia, you got that for a follow up? Thank you.
One little thing I'll think about.
Yes, sir.
You see if we get Amelia out of the V dot district with Chesterfield. Because Chesterfield filed a tender to Amelia, guess how much money ends up in Amelia after they take their cuts? I think V dot always tell me, that's why the work don't get done around here. I said, how come our roads are so bad, our ditch lines are so bad and all this, but again, they just Chesterfield, who do you think gets all the money? I know they got three hundred thousand people, we got thirteen, I can't help that. You know, it used to be we were the district headquarters right here for the counties to the west of us. Because I brought up the thing about a safety precaution and I almost had an accident there yesterday myself at Food Line. And I tell you, I explained to you how it almost happened, and I see the problem. Eastbound, there was four vehicles in the turn lane at the food, but by McDonald's to go in. The light's green, the one over here on the westbound is flashing yellow. These four vehicles turned to go up in there, well, somebody stopped at that stop sign I got, they were backed up all the way to the end of that turn lane where you're going. This dude on the left decided to turn, he comes out, he stops in the eastbound lane with those green, just try to turn trailer passing me. He got by the end of it, I had to slam on brakes and slide up to it. It's that flashing yellow light that you can turn left on, we have what, one to two a week there?
They they are issue.
We should probably get that to V dot, that's a simple change if 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 that.
But I see what happened, you know, he thought he could make it, well, the car first stopped, that stopped everybody, he was stuck out in the in the traffic.
Well, they shouldn't have the stop sign there at Food Line like they do, that shouldn't be a straight through and they should stop it left and right, so.
If we want to try to solve that, we could probably do that like much quicker through through.
Miss Whirling, when you turn to go to uh. Chase City on three sixty up there. They got a caution stoplight, and when it's got rumble strips. And when you get to there, that light starts flashing, it tells you that light's getting ready to change. He didn't know nothing about them, that's a different district, so I've never seen one in Chesterfield like that neither, so probably she doesn't know about them, but they do have them.
Are there, there's a lot of accidents at that intersection?
Oh, there.
Oh, man.
I think the thing already freaking up is another good example of your state level requirements one, so. V dot, regardless of what district we end up in, V dot does, there was a bill to allow localities to uh push for uh speed limit changes. Themselves, because right now we have to rely on V dot, we we can petition, we can ask V dot. For changes, which we've done a number of times, but unless V dot agrees with us, there's no change, we get no say in the speed limits, other than make the request. And the same is true with what he's talking about with the the flashing yellows, so V dot came through, they make they make the decisions where to put the flashing yellow lights. If we feel it's a safety hazard in our area, we can make requests, we can complain, et cetera, we have no authority over that whatsoever.
So you don't want to make the speed limits higher, there's places where you know they're safety issues that you would like to make it lower. So it's not, this isn't a problem of you don't have the engineering, the transportation engineering staff to know what's safe, you actually want to go put a higher safety threshold than what they're already doing. We could talk about that.
When I say reductions because of safety, yes, this is, yeah, bring them down. And that's if I remember in the bill, and it may have been the term right before you joined, and it's it's not trying to.
Yeah, I didn't see that bill.
It might have been the right, the term right, but it was in in recent past, I'm sure they they can look it up, but it is the same kind of point that you're on, and I think you're making a lot of good points that yours aren't about trying to find more money for things, it's how you can kind of. Loosen things up, which should be theoretically easier, but I know some challenges too. He eats right on on track, though, there's, we have no control over it whatsoever, and yet V dot complaints are one of our biggest issues our citizens bring to us.
Yeah, that one too, Sophia.
You know, I I was saying around here, how many people have been killed before they do something? I don't want nobody killed, I want to tear them.
Yeah.
Safety issue, just like a stoplight at one fifty three or three sixty, they said they done a traffic study, it's not enough. Well, when did you do your traffic study, did you get there, punch in at eight o'clock in the morning in Chesterfield and ride to Amelia to start your study? All the traffic's all in went through, Fort Pickett. Well.
Barfoot.
Barfoot. You own there in the mornings or at six o'clock in the afternoon, you can't get on three sixty.
Yeah.
Then the folks on Butler Road start complaining about the tractor and trailer, someone up their road, too much truck traffic, why? They can't get out on three sixty there.
Yeah.
And that's the problem, and they say it's not enough traffic, well, if you ever got down there at five thirty to seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and in that time of the evening, tell me there ain't enough traffic. Because Fort Pickett, there's a world of traffic going over there.
So we can look at this too, you know, just in what we've talked about here. So there's like five potential ideas, and we're getting this at all these meetings, we can carry twenty bills. So this is why I say we're putting all this together, because what we may find is that there's a pattern of localities that would like to have some input into. Speed limits, for example, or or how some safety dollars get allocated, you know, based on, you know, local knowledge or whatever. Some of these we're not going to be able to do anything with because we can only have twenty, uh and and actually, I think for us carrying twenty in our first full session in a budget year. That's gonna be quite a quite a task as it is, because I we're not going to carry any fluffy legislation, anything that we carry in there is going to be meaningful. But anyway, so I just want to make that clear as we go through this process, it's going to become really important for us to prioritize the things that, you know, we think we can make the biggest impact. And some of it, we may be able to do without legislation, there may be.
Yeah, and talking to your other your other peers and things, maybe it's just contributing to their ideas, and they're on the same wavelength or something, and now.
We're talking to Transportation Secretary about some of these issues, you know, we can.
Put a new sign up and see what happens.
And if you're and if you're increasing the safety threshold and you don't have traffic congestion problems, what's the downside?
Yeah, the state's gonna find you, maybe maybe we should pay the fine, you know?
Any other uh? Questions?
I think it's been very beneficial.
Yeah, they showed up.
Well, I appreciate you guys taking the taking the time and and the offer is sincere, like if there's things you want to talk about offline, if you don't have my cell phone number, make sure you get it. Uh David, you have it, so if anybody doesn't have it, you can get it from David and feel free to reach out and, I mean, we don't, to me. It's why I don't mind saying what I don't know, you know, we can do two, one of two things, we can either posture and be all official, or we can be, you know, friends and neighbors that solve problems, and I'm kind of very favorable to the second one, so. You don't even need a real good answer or solution or have all your ducks in a row or some, but like, let's just talk about some of this stuff, if 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 you know there's some issues, let's put our heads together and see what we can figure out.
They don't hurt to say, I don't know, I won't.
Absolutely, I'd much rather do that than. Oh, yeah, I'd rather do that than people think I'm smarter than I am.
Ninety three. David, thank you.
That would be so.
Thank you, David, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dexter? Thank you so. It's high.
Yeah, they turned the wrong way. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
And I would recommend, I think I would recommend yesterday.
Yeah, go ahead. You gotta, just gotta set a workout, that's all we got, Timmy.
It's good, it's great where my people.
Good luck to you in your new position.
Thank you.
Appreciate you stepping out.
Thank you, sir. Well, that's a tall order.
Picture. Where you at? Yeah. Four of you players. Go get in here. Go players, they suck it up, baby.
Like you shoulder a little bit perks up business.
Yeah. Right over, so sad. That way I I get more in there. One, two, three. Alright, I'm beginning on. One, two, three. That's thirty dollars. Fifty dollars for cooking.
I will judge you.
No, I'm charging you.
I said I will.
Don't take care.
Alright gentlemen, I think the only act, next act of business is we need to set up a workshop. Saturday? Saturday? Everybody got the calendar? What, what date is that, Benji?
It's on Friday, eleven.
Yes.
You guys wanna do evenings or not? It'll happen to be Friday. I'm playing from the back home Friday morning, but do Friday afternoon.
Doesn't the, uh, landfill advisor meet Friday morning here? They take the second.
Okay.
Why can't you do it in the evenings?
Well, I'm just afternoon, I can just, I mean, afternoon, it doesn't have to be. Yeah, sure. Wait, wait, let me, maybe I should, maybe I should check my flight. Maybe I should actually check the schedule.
I'm gonna tell you like I always tell you, just tell me what time and when to be there.
Actually, I don't land, sorry. Actually, I don't land till four, so.
Unless they're all on time. Well, we do it Monday to fourteenth. Are you back in town then?
Oh, yeah.
Let's do, let's do it six PM, Monday to fourteenth. That's kind of a evening that gives us plenty of time to advertise it. We'll have a couple of hours. We can work on the budget, we'll have questions. Give everybody time.
We know that some, uh, April fourteenth to six.
Not June. Mr. Money, does staff have that?
He's got it. Yes, Monday, April fourteenth to six PM and it's a budget workshop.
Yep.
Okay.
And far as things that we can staff, I think Mr. Jones had the idea of an assessor. So if you could get us some information on that so we could have to consider. I would like to see the, the lift of the CIP projects approved. Uh, cause I think it's gonna be some discussion on that. Probably send that to everybody. Anybody else got anything they'd like to see?
I just, I'm sending online.
Okay.
I've been working with Ken with something about, um, putting the fire truck on land. So I've, I've kind of talked to you and, uh.
Is that something you would want on the agenda?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess it means talk about it or budget, whatever it is.
Putting a fire truck on.
Putting the reserve truck, get it equipped.
Oh.
Then making that the firing in this truck.
Okay.
So that, then, uh, this rough number is if we round his two point eight up to the one, two point nine up to three. We'll put that EMS ready.
When you better fire the money. Find the money. No, I got the things we gonna talk about in the workshop amongst others, but that's, that's enough to get us going. That'll be, that'll be Eric's first day. So he had to eat. He had to eat supper somewhere at night locally.
Is it easier for staff? Will we continue this budget workshop?
You could, as long as you announce when you're doing it.
Eric, there's a adamant nodding back there. I mean, it does make the, now, it does make, it saves the cost of advertising too.
This meeting will be continued. Would you motion for that?
I would, yes, sir.
Alright, I'll make a motion that this meeting will be continued till April fourteenth at six PM to work on a budget workshop at this location. All in favor? Motion carries. Now we in recess.
He says, or?
No, recess.
Recess.
That works.